Let's call a meeting to order and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Do any council members have announcements?
Not tonight.
I'd like to congratulate the council members that did file for office. Say thank you. We don't have any public hearing communications. Mr. Mulder, I noticed there was something in there on state demographer for the population. Do we know what, if any, changes were made?
Um, yeah, the population, I top of the head, the 2020 census was 10,221. I think the April 1st estimate was 10,550 something.
I think it went down last year.
Yeah, I don't know that. I can't, I can't speak to 22, but that, and that's a 23 number.
Wow, Microsoft is present.
Thank you.
Presentations, we had a short presentation at pre-agenda from Brandon Holmes on our new digital permitting implementation that'll be coming in within a few weeks. Like to thank him for that. Eventually, building permits will be available online. Anything you need to add on that, Mr. Mulder?
No.
We have public discussion. We have two people vying for that public discussion.
Well.
Wait, that's a presentation.
Hang on a second. Um, so Todd, you can wait until we take up the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Grant, it's all yours.
Hello, Hermantown. Thanks for having me. For the record, I'm Grant Haushild, State Senator for our district, 4918 Whitetail Drive here in Hermantown. And grateful to be welcomed back to City Hall and where I formerly served. I wanted to give you guys an update since the session is now over. This year was another one really for, that will go down in history, and I think it was mostly because it was quite chaotic. Really, there was just a lot that happened that made a lot of people, I think, shake their heads. From my side of the aisle, having a member disappear for 24 hours about two days before the end of session because of a single issue, which is Uber and Lyft, to the other side of the aisle where there was a lot of filibustering about hamburgers and things trying to delay votes. There was a lot of challenges this year. But the truth is, in terms of the initiatives that I think were really important to our region, I feel very satisfied with what we were able to accomplish this year. Early on, before the session started, I decided to launch an initiative that I called Northland Strong. And what this is, is really just an outreach initiative for me to try to reach as many constituents as possible. Our district is the largest and most rural district in the state. And we are in the southernmost tip, so I live in the southernmost tip of a district that is the size of Massachusetts, of a district that includes diverse regions, like the Iron Range, like the North Shore, 50% of the Canadian border in Minnesota, the communities of Hermantown, Proctor, and Rice Lake. So it's really diverse, it's very large, there's different communities, different interests, and it's really important for me to be able to reach people. Long story short, I launched this initiative to try to host some roundtables and town halls with constituents to talk about what I thought were some core themes that relate to the challenges that we face. Those include strong families, safe communities, protecting our outdoor heritage, making sure Minnesota continues to be a state that works, as well as innovative economies or diversifying our regional economy. One of the roundtables I hosted was here in Hermantown with Police Chief Jim Kreis around the SRO issue and kind of that safe communities theme. And that was one of the issues that we addressed this session finally. But I also hosted roundtables in Briding Township about EMS. Hosted a roundtable up in Voyager's National Park about our outdoor heritage. One in Grand Marais about how our state agencies work with rural communities. So really just sort of trying to make sure that I'm bringing sort of the voice of the Northland down to the state capital. Because frankly, I'm one of the few members of the DFL that still represents rural areas and outside of the Twin Cities metro, so my voice, I would say, is important just simply from that sort of different perspective view. So a couple of the things that I was really proud of this year. The EMS crisis is one that's a big issue. Not so much in Hermantown, although I would argue the canary in the coal mine is happening. You all are served by mail, which we are very lucky in Hermantown to have that service. But a lot of the communities in our district are served by community ambulances. And what we find in rural ambulance services is that there's really this compounding challenge. We have an aging population, which means more calls. We have folks on Medicare and Medicaid that are not reimbursing at the rates of private insurance. We have rural communities taking on those licenses and putting it on the property tax owners to fund that service. Whereas in the suburbs and the urban areas, it's a private service or it's a large nonprofit that is making money. So there's really some compounding challenges. I worked on an aid package that would send money to a lot of these ailing services. And we really targeted it towards the ailing services, primarily in our district, to make sure that they had a bridge to when we can look at some longer-term reforms. The other part of the package that we worked on, and again, this was a bipartisan effort. We had an EMS task force that Representative Zalesnikar, Representative Listegard, I think those were the two, the two others from our region that were on that task force that put together this package. And it included reforms to the EMSRB, which is the board that oversees EMS. This was really important because that board was really run by private entities. There was no sort of accountability to the governor, to the legislature, of how we were looking at those services in rural communities. That is now reformed, it's an Office of Rural Ambulance Services. And there will be an appointee from the governor, and they'll be accountable to the legislature to look proactively rather than just with a heavy hand on the regulatory front to try to improve services. And then the other thing we did is funded a sprint car medic model in our region, as well as Otter Tail, the two hardest-hit areas, to try to provide sort of a regional patrolling of a sprint paramedic that can try to get on scene, provide life-saving care that maybe wouldn't require a transport. Anyway, I'm getting a little into the weeds. The point is, we really looked at this holistically, and we really took a big step forward. Now we have to figure out whether or not we want a statewide funding source for ambulance services to make up for the, the lack of revenue that we're seeing. The other thing I did this year is looked at the permitting process. We have heard from many industries, from Cirrus to Cleveland Cliffs, to our non-ferrous mining, to our timber industry, to even small businesses who are really saying the permitting process is broken in Minnesota. And so what I did is I worked with a bipartisan group of legislators, and I took an old Senator Tom Asoney bill and did some tweaks to it, worked with our agencies, worked with industry, to come up with a coordinated project plan proposal. Long story short, what this does is it makes it so that our agencies have to coordinate together on environmental impact statements for projects. This is really important because there's so many silos in our government that oftentimes, once you finish one part of a permit with one agency, all of a sudden you're told by the other agency, well, actually, you didn't cross this T and you didn't dot this I, so go back to the drawing board. What we want is we want coordination from the very beginning on how this process works. In addition, we put in some timelines so that there's some accountability on how fast these permits are happening. We're not doing a, you know, checking a box and making sure all the permits pass. You still have to meet environmental standards, you still have to do your due diligence. But we're putting some timelines in so they report back to the legislature, the governor, and the company to say, here's why this timeline was missed. So my hope is that we've sort of put into place a reform that's really going to get us down the right track in, in making sure that Minnesota stays competitive with our permitting process. And I'm happy to take questions at the end, by the way, I'm kind of rushing through this a bit. Another exciting thing in our region was the helium discovery that happened in Lake County and on the Iron Range. This is really huge. Initially, the results were that it was the highest concentration in the world. That is still the case, but the uncertainty was the volume. How much gas is there really underneath the ground? The other exciting prospect was that this helium is being found with CO2 rather than methane. Traditionally, almost all the helium found in the world is mixed with methane, and ours is much cleaner being found with CO2. We're also hoping there's a prospect for hydrogen, which could go a long way towards a clean energy transition. So we put together a framework. Minnesota has no gas regulations, no framework for gas. We've never had a gas industry in Minnesota like they do in, say, North Dakota or other places. So I got to work early on with the company and with the agencies to develop a framework. Yes, the regulatory side was important, and we put in place an expedited rulemaking process. But the more important part for me was the framework to provide a royalty structure to our local communities, to our states and our counties and schools to benefit from this resource. The helium site up in northern Minnesota is on private land. And without a regulatory framework and without a royalty structure, they could have pumped all that helium out of the ground and not paid a dime to the state of Minnesota for those. This is different than tachonite or non-ferrous mining, where you literally are digging onto public land. This gas is pooled underneath the ground, and despite coming from a private source, it could be pooled under state or school trust land. So we needed this framework in place so that we were benefiting from the fact that this gas is coming from state land or county land or school trust land. So we put that into place, we put an 18% royalty tax on it. That's going to hugely benefit our community. The latest drilling is showing that the volumes are tremendous. So really think this could be the next sort of generation of energy development. And once again, northern Minnesota can be a natural resource haven for the state of Minnesota. So really excited about that prospect. I was really excited about the work that we did in a bipartisan fashion, Representatives Lesnikar and I, on a CTE program for Proctor, Hermantown, and Esco school districts. The CTE program out of Proctor is, is phenomenal. And to bring that to the other school districts to sort of create a regional framework for how we can do that was really important. So it's a little bit of money that I think can go a really long way because we listened to our school districts and figured out what they really wanted to explore. I also have another bill that would expand CTE funding statewide. And so I'm really hoping this can kind of be a pilot, show the benefit, show the need for CTE and what we do really well here, and then expand it statewide and provide more CTE funding statewide. So those are some of the successes, what I was really excited about. I would say the two things that I was either disappointed on or need to continue working on. The first one was the big disappointment around bonding. This year, we had, it was a bonding year. And bonding is the one piece of legislation that requires a supermajority vote. I think we're familiar that, with that in Hermantown because we've asked for bonding with my predecessor and then when I took office for the arena project. And unfortunately, we didn't have the minority votes for bonding this year. And that was really apparent sort of early on in the process. They weren't coming to the table, they weren't really negotiating. And when it really came time to vote on it that final week, we just didn't have the votes. And that's a shame, because in my mind, if you look at where the revenue is generated in the state of Minnesota, about 68% comes from the metro, Seven County Metro area. And the rest of it really comes from Duluth, Mankato, Rochester, these hubs that we have regionally. So communities like Hermantown, Proctor, Rice Lake really benefit when we get statewide bonding dollars to our communities so that we don't have to raise their property taxes or do local option sales taxes. So bonding is going to continue to be one of my top priorities. I don't think we'll have a special session unless the minority leadership sort of stands up and say we have the votes. And so we'll have to work on that next year. Next year is not a bonding year, but I think just like last year, we may just have to advance a budget and a bonding bill in the same session. So hopeful that we can move that. If there are projects or things you guys are looking at in Hermantown, would love to explore those with you. Certainly, we have a lot of communities in the district given its size, so I have to be a little careful about overpromising, but I definitely want to help advance good projects and good initiatives. So really proud of what I'm seeing in the community, by the way, with the, with the baseball fields, the tracks and the, or the trails and the, and the arena. So grateful for all your work on that. The other thing is childcare. I've made childcare sort of a personal passion and project. The truth is, what we're seeing with childcare is that it's really a broken system. The private sector can no longer provide these services. The costs are enormous, and we have people deciding either not to have children or to delay having children. And we're seeing populations decrease because folks are deciding to live in places that provide things like affordable health, affordable housing, childcare, broadband, those sort of essential services that people expect. So I had a bill this year that would provide a subsidy for middle-class families. We've done a lot for the lower income, sort of folks that make $65,000 or lower. We've provided some really good support for childcare. But now it's really time for us to look at that middle-class angle and make sure that middle-class families can, can get the childcare that they need. We put a lot of pressure on our young people. They have student loans, they're purchasing a home and getting those initial payments on their mortgage. They're starting to have children and having those childcare costs. Those burdens on our young people is starting to really show in the stressors on our young people. And I just want to make sure that northern Minnesota continues to have opportunities to grow. And I think providing childcare matters not just to the families that benefit, but matters to our businesses, for our workforce, matters to our vibrant communities, to our schools, all the things that we cherish, I think, for places like Hermantown. So those are the initiatives I've worked on. I look forward to advancing childcare again next year. Hopefully, we have some, some funding for that. But I'm happy to take questions. Really pleased with the session, not so much the process, but the deliverables are pretty sweet. So I appreciate your guys' time and happy to take questions.
Any questions from the council?
What besides balloons do they do with helium gas?
Yeah, yeah, good. So it's funny that it's used in balloons because they're really moving away from that because it's so critical for so many things. MRIs, fiber optics, green technologies, chip manufacturing. You hear a lot about chips sort of internationally and the arguments over that. And space exploration, rockets, a lot of those things. So huge potential. And they're seeing that it's really becoming a rare resource and the costs, the, the, I don't know, I'm not a, I don't know the measurements per, per liter? I don't know. It's really high, so it's, it's valuable.
I know there's been a shortage of it to use for.
Right.
Right, right?
Yeah.
People can't have their parties.
Yeah.
Grant, I'd just like to thank you for everything you've done for the community and northern Minnesota. You represent us well, and I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Can I take a quick selfie? Would you guys mind? Is that appropriate? Okay, I'm gonna do it, Craig. Don't say no. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I think that's the first request for ourselves. That you know of. All the other ones, there was no request.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Is there any other public discussion? Do we have anyone online raising their hand? Kevin? Are you watching that or are you watching it, John?
I'm watching it, Mr. Mayor, and we are okay on that front.
Okay. Wow, a ghost. Thank you. Any other public discussion for the council? Next is motions. Motion to approve or deny the renewal of liquor licenses in the attached list. If that's the easiest way to say it, there are several. On-sale, off-sale, 3-2, and dance and Sunday liquor licenses. Do we have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Any questions or comments from council?
Has this list changed at all since last year?
There is, there are two additions. The movie theater, this is our first renewal, they were approved, oh man, I think, in the winter time. And then Joe's Quick Mart is a change from Kareem Inc. They did a rebrand.
Thank you. Any public input on the list or the approvals? Any public input on the list of liquor license renewals? Last opportunity for public input on the liquor license renewals. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is a motion to approve or deny a temporary service expansion application for the Beacon Sports Bar for Summerfest on July 19th and 20th, 24, with proposed hours of sale from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, we're told that they will be shutting the music off at midnight.
Yeah, as in the past years, they'll serve till one, but the music will be done at midnight.
Wanted to make sure that was clarified. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this motion? Any public input on the motion for a temporary service area for the Beacon Sports Bar for Summerfest? Any public input on the temporary service area for the Beacon Sports Bar? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. And a motion to appoint Kevin Hagan to a three-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Counselor Geisler and I interviewed Kevin and were satisfied with his interest and enthusiasm in this area. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I guess my only question, did he get a packet for tomorrow? Okay, Mary should have it, I think, or maybe, was it on his application, his email?
Yeah, it was, but I'll, I'll just.
Maybe you guys can communicate with him tomorrow, because we didn't let him know of the date, so. Okay, thank you.
Any other comment from council? Any public input on this motion? Any public input on the motion of Kevin Hagan to Planning and Zoning Commission? Any public input on the appointment of Kevin Hagan for a three-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is the consent agenda, including the minutes, approval or correction of the June 3rd, 2024 City Council continuation minutes and accounts payable, approved general city warrants from June 1st, 2024 through June 15th, 2024 in the amount of $516,748.73. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolutions. Resolution 2024-90, resolution approving implementation plan for placing police officers represented by LALS on a newly adopted 2024 compensation plan. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder.
So earlier this year, we talked about possible ways to implement the new compensation plan, and we talked about doing that in July of this year. So I met with the union to talk about how that would work relative to their current wage rates. And we really were working on two things. One was to get them on the compensation plan. But two was then is also sets the rates that will work off of for the 2025 contract negotiations. So we met with the union, I think, three different times. And this was the proposal that we came up with. This gives everybody, it moves them on to a step, not that's just a minimum raise, but it guarantees them at least a minimum of a 4% wage rate increase.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I would.
Go ahead.
I'm just going to address all four of them at the same time. I just think with giving everyone a $10,000 bonus correction, their annual three and a half percent raise and a minimum of another 4%, I think, is just a little excessive and especially with contract negotiations coming up, so. Just want to say that to address the next four resolutions.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on the resolution implementing a plan for placing police officers on a newly adopted compensation plan? Is there any public input on Resolution 2024-90? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
No.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution 2024-91, resolution approving implementation plan for placing employees represented by Ask Me on the newly adopted 2024 compensation plan. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder.
So again, we met with the unions on a couple of different occasions to talk about how to implement the compensation plan. And this particular one, one of the positions, the negotiated wage rate was actually higher than what the compensation plan was. But instead of reducing those rates, those were negotiated in good faith effort by the city and the union. We kept those. When we go into negotiations, we'll look at trying to increase those at a lower rate of pay so that we try to get those in line with the compensation plan.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution implementing a plan for placing employees represented by Ask Me on the newly adopted compensation plan? Any public input on Resolution 2024-91? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution 2024-92, resolution improving implementation plan for placing utility maintenance workers and building maintenance workers, officers represented by I U O E Local 49 on the newly adopted 2024 compensation plan. Scratch the word officers there. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Any comment by council? Mr. Mulder, do you need to add anything to this one that's not part of the other two?
Just a little bit of a tweak on this one is, again, because the negotiated rates were actually higher than what the compensation plan said should be, we kept those rates. And then we adjusted just some of them. So some of the steps are not in line, but we will adjust those at a different rate to try to get them in line. In two cases, three cases, they don't fit, they don't fall on the plan. So we red circle those, and we have a specific dollar rate, and then they will move on to one of those steps at a later date.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution 2024-92? Any public input on the resolution placing maintenance workers on the newly adopted compensation plan? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
No.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2024-93, resolution approving implementation plan for placing certain management employees on the newly adopted 2024 compensation plan. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second? Andy, you and I.
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, anything else on these?
Previously, we had reclassified three positions earlier this year and put them on the plan. So this deals with a number of the remaining ones. The only three that have not been implemented yet would be the two fire department employees and the city administrator. But this would put the management employees on the new compensation plan.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I just wanted, Mr. Mulder, can you remind me which three we did previous?
The Assistant City Administrator, the Director of Public Safety, and the Assistant Finance Director.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council? I'm looking at these, and we didn't have the opportunity to speak at these pre-agenda. But I see four that I just, I don't feel are rated properly, that should be rated differently. Go forward with that sentiment. Any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on Resolution 2024-93? Any public input on a resolution placing certain management employees on the 2024 compensation plan? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ninety-four, Resolution adopting the Minnesota General Records Retention Schedule and adopting electronic files as a permanent retention method. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. You can give it to Ellie.
Motion by Councillor Jones, do we have a second from Councillor LeBlanc?
Second.
Second from Councillor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder?
So we are updating our records retention schedule in compliance with the state of Minnesota's, and then also just dealing with the issue of electronic files being a permanent retention method. This is to update that and just to be in compliance with the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution adopting the Minnesota General Records Retention Schedule and adopting electronic files as a permanent retention method? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nine four? Roll call, please.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councillor Jones?
Aye.
Councillor Geisler?
Aye.
Councillor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nine five, Resolution establishing an absentee ballot board for twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
This is a requirement for every election that we hold, that we need to have an absentee ballot board. So this is for the August twenty twenty-four election.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution establishing an absentee ballot board? Any public input on Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine five? Roll call, please.
Councillor Geisler?
Aye.
Councillor Jelly?
Aye.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councillor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine six, Resolution adopting performance measures. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Councillor Jones, second by Councillor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So we do this annually since two thousand and twenty, and what this does is creates performance measures, and we do a survey of the residents about various items that we're concerned about. And so part of this is for the state of Minnesota. They have a Council on Local Results and Innovation, just to show how do local governments measure the work that they're doing in their performance. But we also do it just for ourselves in understanding how we're serving the residents. It gives the residents an opportunity to kind of give their feedback on various things.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Have we, do we have any specific examples of us taking action based off of this survey in the past?
We talked a lot, yeah, we talked a lot about the conditions of roads and the quality of parks several years ago, and that's part of the reasons where Community Recreation Initiative comes out of. That also a little bit of was like, okay, we need to come up with a plan on how do we improve local streets? And it's kind of a little bit about, you know, local road improvements, like, okay, that's the way that we could address that.
I'm just wondering if we could market it so that maybe we get a better turnout than less than a hundred people out of, what did we talk about, ten thousand five hundred roughly? You know?
We can continue to try to improve that. We actually had, this is the year that we've had the best results, in part because we attached it to the survey about the comprehensive plan, so.
Any other questions or comments from council? This is the only form of LGA that we were receiving, Mr. Mulder?
No, this, this was. I was looking back at this now, it was like, you know, when we started this in twenty eighteen, we did not receive any LGA. We could, if we did this, we were getting a couple of thousand dollars worth of LGA. And then subsequently, that formula changed.
Okay, so we still get no LGA?
No, we get LGA.
I was gonna say, didn't we get like three hundred grand or five hundred?
Three hundred thousand dollars with LGA.
Give it more.
Because, yes, because of the funding formula.
Yeah, thank you. Any public input on this resolution? Or any public input on the resolution adopting performance measures? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nine six? Roll call, please.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councillor Jones?
Aye.
Councillor Geisler?
Aye.
Councillor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
And here's the one the audience has been waiting for. Twenty twenty-four dash nine seven, Resolution authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of eight million, seven hundred forty-five thousand dollars in general obligation bonds, Series twenty twenty-four A. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councillor LeBlanc, second by Councillor Jones, and we have an explanation?
Sure.
From Todd?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself, please.
Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates from Roseville, Minnesota. So thanks for having me, I appreciate it. I'll try to do as good a job as John does to summarize the resolution. Thank you. So, so we were here on May sixth, I believe, for the pre-sale report, and that set up the parameters and the terms and conditions for issuing these bonds for, you know, Hermantown Road improvements, Old Midway Road and Fitchner Park. Am I pronouncing that right, or is it Fitchner? Fitchner, all right. And, and so what we do between then and now, of course, we held a public hearing on tax abatements for that, to fill the gap for the Fitchner Park side of things, which is mostly sales tax payback. And then we package up the bond issue with a preliminary official statement, which is the offering circular that bidders bid off of today. So before we did that, we held a rating conference call with Standard and Poor's, and because we want to make sure we maintain your double A stable outlook credit rating. We're not looking for any miracles to go up. We've got a lot to do in Hermantown, we've got a large arena project coming up, so we just want to hold our own. And we did, so we maintained our double A stable credit rating. So a couple of weeks ago, we had sort of, after we give the analysts at Standard and Poor's all this great information, we still have a conversation with them. So John and Kevin were on the phone a couple of weeks ago, and we updated them from last year's rating, you know, with your twenty twenty-two financials and twenty twenty-three, you know, audits, budget for twenty-four and along with your economic outlook, so. And I don't think there were really, didn't seem like there were any surprises. We didn't really have any, a lot of follow-up information that they needed. Kevin was really great to package up what they needed. They give us kind of a clue, right, of what they all would like to see and how things are, and they compare from twenty twenty-three. And so without a whole lot of extra effort to move forward with this rating, everything was pretty much status quo, and that's sort of the stability part of the rating. I think, you know, we need to highlight, they had mentioned that, you know, your financial stability and performance and good management and long-term financial planning are positive credit factors. Strong reserves and continued growth in your tax base contributed to your stable outlook. So that's all good, so pretty much status quo, it's all great. We did, I think, in twenty twenty-three, let them know about the big arena project coming up. So that really helps a lot, no surprises, you know? We don't want to see anything fall, fall down below where we are right now. So staff did a great job of putting everything together for us, everything we needed. So everything went very, very smoothly. So I have a pre-sale report for you to take a look at tonight in your, I did send it over via email today. It's, it's got the brief outline of how things came in today. It's got the final sources and uses, the bond payment schedule that I went through with John and Kevin in the morning, made some adjustments to it. Your rating report is in here for your viewing pleasure. At some point, you can take a look at that, it's a nice, short, easy to read, read. It's got some good statistics in there and pretty much says what I tried to summarize here this evening. We've got a bond buyer index graph that's attached too, to kind of show the thirty-year trend. That's a good time to bond, it looks good, things are just jumping up and down. And I think we caught it on the downside of the, of the up, that's probably coming again. It just seems to be kind of the trend. And then there is a bond resolution you just had talked about, that we'd be looking for your consideration to approve, if you like what you see. So we took bids up to ten thirty this morning, and we received five bids, we had five set up. We had the same five almost that set up bid. We had a key, I think it's called Key Bank, dropped, and TD Securities out of New York popped in. Lots of activity on a Monday. We saw, you know, a couple of school district bonds, there was some rather large municipal bonds in the market today. This was not a bank-qualified bond, neither will the next one be, because we're over like the ten million dollar federal limit for that, but, you know, believe it or not, rates are lower on non-bank qualified bonds right now than bank qualified. It's just because the feds rate is so high, and the banks are just not being players as much as they would be if they had cheap money to lend. So it doesn't make much difference. So actually, it's a good time to do what we're doing right now this year, so. And I know you all knew that, but I just wanted to let you know. So our five bidders are listed on the bid tabulation. Baird out of Milwaukee was the winner. They went in with twenty-three participants, came in to play on this. So, and you can recognize a lot of them, Collier Securities, Ed Jones was in there, Northland Securities is in there, and a whole host of other players went in with Baird, and they were at three point five three percent true interest cost, and that's about fifty-five basis points or point five five percent less than our May sixth estimate. We did put a little cushion in there, we put fifty basis points of cushion just to make sure. So I, you know, so Kevin and John, I think we're spot on, pretty much. No surprises, which is great. And then the next one was Bach Beok Financial Securities out of Milwaukee at three point five seven. TD Securities, like I had mentioned, out in New York, at three point six six. Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, three point six seven, and FHN out of Memphis, Tennessee at three point six eight. So kind of tight bidding, I would say that way, but it's a large bond issue. So the difference between the low bid and the high bid and an interest cost, you know, what is this interest difference? It's a little north of a hundred and twenty-two thousand bucks. So it's still good to send out a good quality general obligation bond, highly rated, out into the market and see what happens. And five bids is what I'm seeing on this quality of a, of a, of a bond issue. And it goes out almost twenty years too, by the way, so it's not a short one, it's, it's a rather, rather long one. So I think that's a good, a good, a good bidding scenario. Plus, I know we don't want to get into the weeds too much, but another positive for you folks issuing a bond right now that's longer rather than shorter. I know some of you might eat this up, but it's got an inverted yield curve right now, so it swoops like this. So it doesn't go straight up. So the shorter terms are high, and the middle is low, and the longer gets high again, so the average is actually probably lower than a, than a short bond. So it's a good time to stretch it out, issue a large bond like you're doing. And I knew you knew that too, so that's great, free to do that. So we did have premium bidding on this. We had mentioned a little bit about that, it's a little bit of smoke and mirrors, but it's not, I mean, it's real cash that Baird's customers are putting into this deal in the form of cash. And in exchange for that higher coupon rate, they call that, on this bid tab, and if we lower the bond issue by that premium, we still keep, have enough for project costs, because it's like cash, right, so we don't, can lower the bond issue down, the project stays the same. We're able to kind of burn that rate down to that yield, pretty much, so we get that down. Some cities keep some of it, some cities don't, some keep some of it. We decided to sort of, well, we keep it, but we decided to lower the bond issue down by a whopping nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. So that's what that means to you guys, we lowered that bond by nine hundred and ten thousand. So we're not issuing nine million, six fifty-five anymore, we're issuing that smaller, well, eight million, seven forty-five, and that's that premium that came in. And there's lots of moving around the shells here this morning. And, and I think we did it right, the bond issue has to be rounded to the nearest five thousand. So I think this looks really good. And, and we got confirmation from staff that this, this is what we wanted to do, because the sales tax revenue portion in legislation plays off of like a maximum amount of bonds, and so we wanted to maximize that. And then we could lower sort of the, the gap part of the bond issue that we needed extra, we lowered that down. And then we lowered the street, okay, the Old Midway Road, the Hermantown Road, lowered that down. So we lowered the streets down by like four fifty, and let's just say the, the park project by four fifty. And so it all worked out really well. But lots of moving, again, the shells around with my analysts this morning, and some phone calls and some follow-ups with John and Kevin, and I think we did a, we did a great job there. And I believe that is, I'm just looking here, those are the highlights to this, it's all final tonight. So I yield to you folks for questions if you have any for me, but it worked out as planned. That's good?
We planned that.
Yeah, it's a good plan.
I just have one question. You said it's not a bank-qualified loan because it's over ten million, but it's nine six, it was nine six, now it's eight seven four? So it's more than ten million, or it's not more?
Oh, we have another one coming up that's going to be seventeen or so millions, so we're going to be over the total ten million in a calendar year. Yep, great question.
Got it, okay.
So yeah, we don't catch it now, and it's, if we didn't have a reasonable expectation of issuing that other one, let's just say it came up all of a sudden as a surprise, then, then we could issue this bank-qualified, but it's a little, little hairy on that too even. So we want to make sure that we, we have to account for everything we issue in one calendar year in twenty twenty-four, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a comment on that, so we, in the past, I have had projects that were over ten million dollars, but we, some, there was at least one project where we split it. So we did nine million in one year.
Yep.
And then we waited until January to issue the second one, so that way both of them were bank-qualified. Because this year, we're going to issue two that are going to be more than ten million, we don't call them bank-qualified.
Yep, I think we did that with the Wellness Center, probably, we skipped over a year just, just to do that. But now, it's, it's, it's the perfect storm, this is, these non-bank qualified are actually cheaper.
Can we get a copy of that report?
Yes. Yeah, we did, I, my fault, I meant to have that in front of you, and I didn't get it done, we'll get it.
I have a question on the, on the schedule within the resolution. It looks, shows interest rates of five and dropping in at four percent, how does that relate to this percentage?
And, yep, that's a good question too. So, so if you had the report, you'd see the bid tabulation here, you'd see the five percenters are that coupon rate. That's actually what you're going to pay. And there's a re-offering yield is what the customers that hold these bonds are going to get. So the difference between those two is the premium, I think in simple terms, is the nine hundred and ten thousand. Okay. So by giving the nine hundred and ten thousand back, we're lowering, I guess, we're not giving it back, we're going to lower the bond, we have less bonds to pay at five percent, so it's kind of, we're paying the lower, does that make sense?
Get it?
That's, 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 that's the only way I can understand it too, so.
Well, I didn't get what you were saying before until we say it's really five percent, but it's three point five three.
Yep, and I think what they're saying is the customers would like, what they're doing is they're kind of increasing the value of the bonds they hold, right, by having a five percent on the bond as opposed to three point one or something. And they're thinking maybe rates are going to go up, they want a more marketable bond to trade, because who wants to buy a three point one percent bond, they'd rather like trade to a five, right? So, so for that, that luxury to do that, they're actually giving Baird this underwriter cash, and that's where the premium comes from, that's called production. Yep, so if you were to buy this bond, if you were a customer of Baird or whatever, at closing, you'd have to cough up some cash to, to buy this, extra cash to buy this bond. Yep, not just the paramount, but. Yep. Not just the paramount, but some more.
You got to pay money to be allowed to invest your money.
Yep. Isn't that amazing? There's people out there that, like, will do this. It's great. Yeah.
Any other questions for Todd? Any public input on this resolution? Mr. Mulder?
Just one comment. Kudos to Kevin in, in terms of just pulling this all together. It's a lot of work to make sure we respond to the rating agency, figure out, you know, the amount that needs to be borrowed, and just, and all of that. So just, you know, thanks to Kevin for all the work on this.
And we're going to do it again. Yes. He's our, he's our quality control. That's for sure.
Thank you. And any other public input on this? Any public input on Resolution 2024-97? Joe, is anyone online?
We do have folks online, and they can unmute and give their name and address whenever they'd like.
Okay. Last opportunity for public input on the issuance and sale and delivery of $8,745,000 in general obligation bonds. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-98. Resolution approving preliminary and final plat of Stebner Park and imposing conditions on the final plat. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Johnson to go over this?
Sure.
Eric?
Great, thank you very much. Before us is this preliminary and final plat. The purpose of this is to create an 8.67 acre development parcel associated with the Great Northern Sports Dome that we've talked about at previous meetings. So what this plat is doing, it's creating two outlots, which essentially contain the soccer fields and Herman Town Trail. It creates a public right-of-way associated with Stebner Park Drive. And then lastly, as I mentioned, that 8.67 acre development parcel. This property is zoned Herman Town Marketplace. It does not have any minimum lot sizes. So essentially, what we're doing tonight does meet our Herman Town Marketplace zoning as well, from a plat standpoint.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution approving, approving preliminary and final plat of Stebner Park and imposing conditions on the final plat? Any public input on Resolution 2024-98? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-99. Resolution approving final pay request for Stebner Park Utility Improvement District Number 544 to Northern Interstate Construction Incorporated in the amount of $26,465.73. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the final payment for extending utilities into Stebner Park with the idea of hopefully serving the, the Sports Dome at a later date.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution 2024-99? Any public input on the final pay request for Park Utility Improvement District Number 544? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2024-100. Resolution approving change orders number one through two for Fichtner Park Improvement to Caskey Incorporated in the amount of $221,123. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So briefly, the two change orders, one is to replace an existing sewer line in the park that runs under the, one of the parking lots that would serve this building. As we, as we looked at this, there was a sag in the line, and we think we need that, that needs to be corrected. The second one is to redo the parking lot that is off of Uggstead Road. We were going to add some curb and gutter and change the elevations so that it all flows in one direction.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on a Resolution approving change orders number one through two for Fichtner Park Improvements? Is there any public input on Resolution 2024-100? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-101. Resolution approving pay request number one for Fichtner Park Improvements to Caskey Incorporated in the amount of $371,438.60. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the first pay request for the work that's been done at Fichtner Park to date.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the Resolution approving pay request number one for Fichtner Park Improvements? Is there any public input on Resolution 2024-101? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-102. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver acceptance of easement agreement to the City of Herman Town from Darlene J. Hadrick for the Benson Road Improvement. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
For this one and the next one, we are going to replace a culvert on Benson Road. And so we needed temporary easements from these two property owners to get that work done.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on a resolution of the acceptance of easement agreement? Any public input on Resolution 2024-102? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2024-103. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance of easement agreement to the City of Herman Town from Theodore J. Kimmels for the Benson Road Improvements. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counsel Jones. Second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Geisler. We got an explanation on the last one. Is there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on an easement agreement for the Benson Road Improvements? Is there any public input on Resolution 2024-103? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-104. Resolution approving an agreement with Daniel Williams and Heather Williams in regard to project number 601 to extend Benson Road within the City of Herman Town. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Mr. Mulder?
So as we redo the Benson Road culvert, we're also going to extend the road. The right-of-way is on, we have the right-of-way already, but the road isn't built to the property line. So we're going to build the road to the property line, within the existing right-of-way.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, are we requiring them to put a cul-de-sac in the end of that road? No, there's, we are not. Because I know I was told in the past it was a safety thing, that we have cul-de-sacs in the end of our dead-end roads. And there's, there's no right-of-way today. That's a, so that's why we allow that to happen. I just think maybe we should have a little more consistency when we add onto these roads. If we're going to require it from one spot, we should be requiring it across the board.
In a newly plotted area, that would be easier, because we would define that. But in this case, it's not there. We would have to go buy that easement from.
We already have the easement for the road, no?
Not for a cul-de-sac. We only have the 66 foot wide. We would need a much bigger bell at the end to make the cul-de-sac.
Any other questions or comments from council? Roll call, or wait, public input on Resolution 2024-104? Trying to get this over with. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution extending the Benson Road? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2024-105. Resolution approving pay request number seven for road improvement district number 538 to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $176,634.74. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Mr. Mulder?
As you'll recall, when we redid some of the roads in Herman Town Marketplace last summer, we didn't finish the work, and specifically, some of the curb and gutter and some of the sidewalk. So that work has now been completed. So this is the payment for that work.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Or any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution for the final pay request for road improvement district number 538? Any public input on Resolution 2024-105? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2024-106. Resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for bid package number two for the North Star Ford Arena. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
So KA is finishing up those bid documents this week, and they hope to be out on the 19th. Bids will be due on July 18th. And if everything goes as planned, we would have the council award those bids on August 5th. We will make sure that we have a complete bid package on file at the office.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I, I have one relating to procedure. Now, we've been told there's going to be a guaranteed maximum price, but all the bids will be in before that. Is that?
That's correct.
Is that normal?
Yes.
Okay.
So that cover any change orders? The council won't see any change orders then for the duration of this project?
Unless you say we want something different.
What happens if we have an unforeseen, something pop up like the sewer line on Fichtner? Would that be covered by their guaranteed maximum price?
And again, it would depend upon the scope of work and what was in the scope.
Typically not, because it's added scope. Nobody would have known to bid that.
Unless we scope the lines before we put it out for bid.
Any other questions from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the Resolution approving plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids for bid package number two for the North Star Ford Arena? Is there any public input on Resolution 2024-106? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones. Mayor Boucher.
Aye.
Next is a motion to go into closed session. Motion to close the meeting of the Herman Town City Council pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3B to discuss the city administrator's performance evaluation. Following this closed session, the Herman Town City Council will reconvene in open session pursuant to the posted agenda for that date and time. And during such open session, summarize its conclusions regarding the evaluation. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Move to closed session?
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.